Good evening. Welcome to the January 28, 2025, School Committee meeting. First step on the agenda is going to be open public comments. I do see that we have one, at least one. Oh, sorry. We are, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. Sorry. That's okay.
Hi there. Good evening, everyone.
Just state your name in.
Erin McCarthy, South Street in Foxborough. I'm kind of here to express my concern regarding the current budget proposal that's listed as an action item tonight. The timing of this action is unacceptable, particularly in light of the fact of seven out of nine collective bargaining agreement units have open contracts. As we know, these contracts are crucial to ensuring fair compensation and working conditions for our staff. And without finalizing agreements in place, it becomes difficult to accurately predict and allocate the necessary funds in the budget. Given the importance of these contracts to both our educators and support staff, I urge the committee to carefully consider postponing the final budget approval until all units have had an opportunity to propose financial packages at the table. This will allow for a more comprehensive, transparent, and fair allocation of resources which will reflect the commitments you intend to make to those who serve our students. I trust the committee will make the best decision for our schools, community, and taking into account the ongoing negotiations and the needs of our staff. Thank you.
Any further open public comment? All right. Seeing them, we're going to move on to our approval of minutes. We have a few subcommittee minutes in here from the budget.
I make a motion to approve the December 9, 2024 budget subcommittee meeting minutes as proposed.
Second.
All in, any further discussion on that? No? All in favor? That would be a 5-0-0 vote in favor of approving those minutes. I believe we have one more set of minutes.
I make a motion to approve the January 6, 2025 budget subcommittee meeting minutes as proposed.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All right. All in favor? All right. That would be 5-0-0. Thank you very much. So those two sets of minutes are all set. We're going to move right on to the teaching and learning highlight. We have Dr. Donovan, Dr. Wazuski, and Ms. Dorico here to discuss the NIESC update.
So, good evening. It's so wonderful to see you all. We just wanted to come this morning to just tell you a little bit about our NIESC accreditation process and where we are. And we have good news to report. But I wanted to begin by showing you just a video that we had created this fall about the high school. It's on our website, but if you haven't seen it, it was made by two high school students, and they did a wonderful job. So we'll start here.
Thing I love most about this school is part of the staff. They're all warm. They're all welcoming. Anything you need, any type of advice that you need, they'll all, they'll be willing to give it, and they're always there for you. And so, that's fine.
I feel like the school allows me to take classes that challenged me, so I'm able to work on my perseverance.
School works toward trying to include everyone and anyone, no matter like your background, your gender, your race, et cetera.
Teachers are very good at supporting me. And when I ask them questions or staying after school or just anything in general, teachers are really good at just making sure you know what you're doing.
I feel like it's a school that's, that takes academics seriously, so I feel like this definitely pushed me to be a better student.
A lot of my teachers are supportive of what I want to do when I'm older, and they connect it to the things we do in class. They also stay after with me when I'm needed, give me extra help, and give me the resources to be successful on, during class.
Friends and everything, it's fun. And sports, it's very challenging in classes and stuff.
And so the film was put together by two seniors, Sam Jewels and Jaden Jean. And really what we asked them to do is to just create like a hype video for the high school with really no constraints. And over the course of about two weeks, this is what they put together. And it's awesome. It's 10 times better than, than what any of us as adults would have put together. And the kids just did a great job. So, moving forward here, we're here to talk about our NIESC process. So, this has been a long process for the high school. And I want to begin by thanking Mrs. Dorico and Dr. Wazuski, who are our co-chairs for this work. They began it now almost 60 years ago, leading the self-study efforts. And the rest of our team, Mr. Struble, Mrs. Borges, Mrs. Barrett, and Mr. Johansmeyer, who along with these two really led the effort at the high school for many, many years and did hours and hours and hours of work on the backend to get us, to get us to where we are now, which is, we have completed our accreditation process. As of yesterday, we received our completed report from our decennial visit in October. That report is not official yet. It won't become official until it is adopted by the NIESC Board of Commissioners in March. So we expect sometime by March 10th that our accreditation will be awarded for the next 10 years. And that's something we're very proud of. And as soon as the, as soon as that vote comes out, we'll publish the report to the community so everyone can see what we did. But we wanted to take a, give you a brief tour of kind of where we are at the moment.
So the team came and visited us for the decennial from October 27th to October 30th. They were in the building from the beginning of the day till the end of the day for two, for three full days. And in the first two days, they really worked to get to know our school. They visited every classroom. They met with teams of teachers. They met with teams of students. We had a full student fair where they were able to interact with our students and see some of the great work that they have been able to do. They met with leadership. They met with some members of the school committee, as well as with central office staff. So it was a very thorough couple of days where they were learning about us and trying to figure out all the working parts and make sure that what we had reported in our self-study was moving forward and that we were true to form. The initial feedback that came out, all of it was very positive. They've really commented on the collegial nature of our building, the culture that we have in our building. They've understood, and it was very clear that our, we have a safe environment for both students and for adults. They were impressed with our movement and our work that was expanding the MTSS. They were really happy that our curriculum documents are starting to work to a public-facing document and that they are becoming more aligned. They saw through the classroom observations, the use of instructional practices, the different assessment models that are being used, the way that PBL is used, all the video, things that you saw where students are actually doing real-world learning and inquiry-based type of learning was very evident in their visit. And that we have, you know, a great school overall was really their takeaway. They were very impressed. And our team did come from a variety of administrative staff, as well as teachers from the area. Our assistant chair came all the way from Connecticut, and we had other teachers and administrators coming from Massachusetts as well.
So part of our self-study process involved us identifying several priority areas that we would work on during the RNESC process. So we identified four priority areas. First, that we would develop a written document, including our core values, beliefs about learning, and the vision of the graduate. That we would develop school-wide organizational practices designed to meet the diverse learning needs of each student and promote equity. That we would develop and implement processes, interventions, and strategies to support the academic and social emotional success of all students. And that we would write all of our curriculum documents in a consistent format for all courses in all departments and publish them. So as you can see, we have either met or are on track for all of our priority areas, and we received commendations for the work that we've done on our priority areas.
And so, moving forward, we, these are the next steps. So we have to file a report within a year with the commission, which just provides some updates on the work that we've done since their last visit this fall, and also any changes to our staffing or program areas from what were they are previously. And we have a certain amount of time, if there's a change or reduction in staff or something like that, that we have to notify them. Then we will do a three-year report in 2028, a six-year report in 2031, and in the spring of 2032, we will start the self-study accreditation process all over again, which is a very, seems like a very long time, a very far, long way out, but, but we'll be here sooner than later. So, again, I just wanted to share, particularly for Dr. Ross and for Mrs. Dorico, how grateful I am and the community as, as a whole, for their leadership in this process over the last three years they've done, or last five years, they've done an incredible job. And we would not have been in the place that we were in without them and without the work of the visiting team. So, and I have to report, we are in a very good place.
Thank you.
We're happy to have any questions. Answer any questions.
Just of the priority areas, I noted that one was met and three are on track. What are the potential impediments to the on-track priority areas?
I think it's mostly time, because one of them is really looking at our schedule and how we can change our schedule around so that we can meet the needs of our students. And so that, I think, is just a time impediment. So I think Schedule Committee has been meeting last year, this year, trying to come up with a schedule that will help us to meet that goal. And I think time, looking at the other two, time is just making sure that we get all curriculum documents. That just takes time to do. And then same with our MTSS structures, just making sure that we think about them and are thoughtful when we make decisions. So just time.
Thank you.
If I can add one thing to that, to Dr. Ross's comment, we also structured it that way. So for example, the MTS, we, when we set our benchmarks for where we wanted to be and when, we knew we wanted to have the schedule work complete, because that would allow us to finish the MTSS work. So we had set benchmarks out to 2027 for these original four priority areas. So the one that was met was the one that we needed to really have done, was our priority, our first priority. And then we have the rest of our kind of benchmarks are all the way out through 27.
Thank you. I just have one comment. I want to also acknowledge my gratitude for the work. Sorry, Paul. Just acknowledge, give you my gratitude for the work. I understand anecdotally from colleagues in other districts, as well as from colleagues in this district, how much time and effort goes into this work. And I am very grateful that our entire community, our teachers, the school handled the disruptions and to meet the requirements of this visit or this accreditation. And I also appreciate the foresight or the forethought to prepare for the next one. So thank you.
You mentioned having some agency in terms of the 2027 deadline. Did you also have similar agency in the area number four, the June 2025? As in this June? As in, you're giving me a heart attack reading that? That's an incredible amount of work. Yeah. Is that, so what, yeah, where, at what stage you all with that now, across the department?
I think for the most part, our, most of our core classes are now in common format and published on the website. And so it really is looking at some of the, the non-core classes, the electives.
Which we have many.
So that, I think we're actually in pretty good shape to meet that deadline.
Congratulations. That's.
Just to jump in, I will say that, that this group, our curriculum leaders, our curriculum directors across the district, really worked at an expedited pace to get those curriculum documents together. Part of what Dr. Donovan was speaking to, there's a, really a specific order of operations that, that happens through this accreditation process, where we really needed the vision of a graduate in place in order to fully implement those written curriculum documents. But we're, we're in really great shape. All of our core classes do have those curriculum maps complete, and those elective classes that we'll be able to add to the website over time, we can prioritize that through, through spring and summer work and really be in good shape to have that fully implemented by June.
Well, I recall when you all were at the beginning of this process, you know, years ago, that, that this was a, that this was one of the goals. And I'm pleasantly surprised that, that the timeline is advanced as this. It's, it's a ton of work, having had to do it myself. It's very impressive. So congratulations. And I hope you all and your faculty and everyone who's worked on these can breathe a little bit easier. So, that's all I have. Madam Chair.
All right. Any further comments, questions? Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you.
So next up, we have competency determination update. Dr. Barrows and Dr. Donovan are going to handle that for us.
There we are. All right. We have a number of updates for the school committee tonight, and we're also, there, there's going to be a significant amount of internal work that we're going to need to tackle over the course of the next month. We have some updates for you, some asks for you. But before we begin, I really do want to emphasize that this is a bit of a moving target. There's a lot happening at the state level. The, the governor's office, which I'll speak to in a, in a few minutes, as well as the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, is continuing to move on different components for this. So tonight, what we're presenting to you is the information that we know at this moment in time. We know the ask that we have of you this evening. And Dr. Donovan and myself have been workshopping what this could potentially look like internally, and we have a good amount of work over the course of the next month or so before we're really able to begin the process of making those competency determinations for the class of 2025. So just a reminder for everyone, this was the ballot question language from the November election. This did pass. It amended the competency determination requirement and added in this additional language. It removed the MCAS as a high school graduation requirement moving forward. It, it, and then it requires individual districts to locally certify coursework that meets the standard for competency determinations and, and use that as the, the high school graduation requirement moving forward. This does not eliminate all of our students that have previously passed the MCAS from the class of 2025, the class of 2026. All of those students have met the competency determination. We're not concerned about those students moving forward. We need to come up with an internal plan and have our graduation requirement policy reflect this, this new statute language and be able to offer a pathway toward graduation for those students that haven't already passed the MCAS. So there are a bunch of moving pieces. There's the, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. We'll be meeting next month and voting on the potential for new regulations underneath this ballot question. We also have some movement from the governor's office as well. We've been receiving over the course of the past few months, some guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed on things that districts should be thinking about internally. And we're, we're going to share with you tonight what our, what our thinking is at the moment. So, moving forward, the local district competency determination cannot include the MCAS. It is recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed that we really separate out local graduation requirements from that competency determination process. So we're, you're going to see that intentional parsing out those two and making a distinction between those two. Governor Healy announced about two weeks ago that she would be putting in place a K-12 statewide graduation council. That council has representation across a number of organizations in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. We do, current estimates for the timeline for this work is about 18 to 20 months for the council. So it could be as much as two years before we have any changes and any recommendations to graduation requirements. The goal of this council is to examine and pursue whether or not a statewide graduation requirement is, is something that the state of Massachusetts is interested in. So that would impact our local graduation requirements and our local policy language around our, our high school graduation requirements. The good news is that's, that's about two years out, so hopefully by that time, we'll have figured out the competency determination piece. So what are, what are the things that we need to do? The, the charge that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed has, has left on our shoulders is establishing some local criteria for how we'll determine competency determinations. As you know from that ballot question, it's, it's coursework that we're going to be looking at. We need to first focus on the class of 2025 and, and address those students that have not yet passed the MCAS. Another unknown that we're going to need to figure out internally is what that could look like for students from the graduating class of 2003 to the graduating class of 2024, who did not earn a high school diploma through passing the MCAS. We're going to have to come up with a process and retroactively review that, the coursework for those students and determine whether or not, under these new statute regulations, whether or not they've met that competency determination. We currently, as it stands, because of where our graduation requirement school committee policy is, we're not able to make movement on that yet. But as soon as that school committee policy is updated, we'll have the ability to, to begin that communication to families and talk about what that can look like. So a couple of things, just to make a distinction between the two. MCAS assessments are still required. They're still being administered in the areas of ELA, math, in science, in grades three through 10. Participation is required. All local school districts have a participation requirement of 95%. So we have to have a 95% participation rate for our students in the MCAS. It is tied to our district accountability ratings. Students can still qualify for the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, the Steve Coplik, am I saying that correctly? Scholarship as well, through their performance on the MCAS. And the MCAS alt will remain as an option for that subset of students that had previously pursued the MCAS alt. It's just not attached to a graduation requirement anymore. The new language around competency determinations, it's very important that, that we move forward separating out our high school graduation requirements from that competency determination. It is a prerequisite to high school graduation requirements, but it is separate. Competency determinations are intended to assess student mastery of 10th grade standards in the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks for math, ELA, and science, all of those MCAS-tested subjects. And we are anticipating, in the month of February, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education could provide a bit more clarity on that, any other additional areas determined by the board. So as early as the end of February, we could know details about whether or not that's going to expand, or if there'll be further details or further clarity on the process for how districts are to certify competency determinations. Okay. And I am going to hand it over to Dr. Donovan to, to talk about the logistics and the local details for us.
So this is our current school committee policy for graduation requirements for the high school. And as Dr. Barrows alluded to before, we are going to make an ask of the committee that, that some revisions be made to this policy, and specifically two, right? One is to amend the existing language where, that says each student must pass the required state exams to, that they meet, that they earn a competency determination, which is a very simple change. And then the second part is more of a housekeeping. At the, at the bottom, there's a, a sentence about a change in graduation requirements as of 2016. That transition has already occurred, and that's really unnecessary language at this point. The big thing is, we're not making any changes as part of this ballot initiative and the, and the follow-on work. Any changes at all to our existing graduation requirements. Students will still need to pass four years of English, four years of math, three years of social studies and science, two years of a world language, so many semesters of physical education and health, and then a remainder of other credits to earn the, our minimum threshold of credits to graduate, 24 credits to graduate. So all of that will remain in place. What we need to develop is a pathway for our current seniors, class of 2025, and the class of 2026. Both are in district and out-of-district students, that we can determine that they have met the requirements of a competency determination. And we envision this working really in two different ways over, over four different scenarios. So we'll break it apart a little bit cleaner on the next slide. But really, our minimum coursework, so our existing coursework for students in, in ninth and 10th grade, and our courses for MCAS, ninth grade English, 10th grade English, our college prep and honors courses, and our math courses, which for most students are algebra and geometry, although for some students, it's algebra II in 10th grade, and then our ninth grade biology course. And so students who are taking our honors and college prep sections of those courses will earn their competency determination by their coursework. We know that we have some students in districts who take non, non-college prep or honors courses in the ninth and 10th grade. Primarily, those students are in, those are special education classes. They also could be students who are taking VHS classes that are not honors or college prep, or it could be an Edge of Seer course for a student who's transferred in. There's lots of kind of variables that are there. And so that would be, they would follow likely Pathway Two, right? Which is where assessing their work based off of standards or their, their coursework. Are they showing that they have, have developed or have produced products in class that demonstrate their knowledge of the skills? We also, as Dr. Barrows alluded to a moment ago, have to consider students who may have met the requirements to graduate over the last 20 years, but did not earn a competency determination through the MCAS exam. We have to, they're still kind of emerging, understanding as to what our responsibilities are as a district. As far as contacting people, it's very unclear. The Department of Education used to manage all of that and allow students the opportunity to take the MCAS over and over again. If there are any students over the last 20 years who fall into this category in Foxborough, we estimate that number to be very low. This is not a large population of people. In the last three years, in the three years that I've been at the high school, we would have zero students that fit this category. And then, we, what we do need to do is, is to anticipate students who are out of district and where we can review their graduation requirements or courses, or maybe do a similar kind of portfolio assessment. So as I said before, in Pathways One and Three, we're really looking at coursework, where students would have to earn a 60 or above in that course to pass. That would include also students who take summer school classes, and that would meet the, the competency, that would meet our threshold for competency determination. For students, included in this would be students who are transfer students. So that's really our biggest group of the class of 2025. Students who haven't been able to take the MCAS yet. They may have taken the, the retest in November, if they just moved in as a junior. But they would not have been able to take the science test yet, and they no longer can earn their competency determination by taking the science test. So what we're going to have to do is create a way in which we review their transcript and. and see that they meet the elements of it, which will be a fairly, we anticipate being a fairly straightforward process. For our students who are in out-of-district schools, we may have to look at a portfolio of their work, and it's similar, we may have to go through a similar process for students who have graduated, or who didn't graduate, maybe got a certificate of attendance but met the requirements of graduation. Again, we anticipate that number of students, individuals as being very, very small at this point. And really, at that point, we'd be looking to the best that we can at, did the course at the time meet the elements or the domains of the coursework now? And if that is the case, then we anticipate at that point being able to certify that they have earned their competency determination. There is in the, when you take the amalgamation of language from the ballot initiative and put it with the pre-existing language, there are actually two different standards that are written in. So, there is one about satisfactorily completing coursework and then mastery of the skills. At the moment, DESI has encouraged us to all follow the satisfactorily completing coursework as meeting the standard, which will be, make this process much easier, especially when we look at transferring students. As Dr. Burrows alluded to before, any areas, we do have to be prepared for there to be changes over the course of the spring, changes for the next year from any of the various organizations within the state that have some input here, whether it be DESI or ultimately the Governor's Council, whether it be legislation that is introduced along the way. And that actually is not really a new process. We've had changes to the history curriculums that have been through legislation that has moved outside of the Board of Ed. So, this has happened before. And then, we will be standing up an organization, a group inside the school that'll be made up of our, to be our competency determination panel. So, that's the group of people who will really look at all of our kind of one-off scenarios, students in collaborative, students in, who may have earned a certificate of attendance previously, and they will make those decisions on certifying whether or not students earn their competency determination. It will be our district out-of-district coordinator, our district's out-of-district coordinator, Mr. McGlazik, Dr. Burrows, myself, and our, the relevant curriculum department heads at the high school, making those decisions. And so, at this point, we're happy to take any questions.
I'm just curious. If the responsibility goes to, of determining graduation, like if that goes to Foxborough, is there any kind of audit process from the Department of Elementary or Secondary Ed? Because they've given like, it seems like a loose guideline at this point, right now. I don't mean to ask a tough ques, I'm not trying to.
No, no.
I think, sure. So, I think that we have to respond with the information that we have in front of you. I hear you and I understand that it does feel loose at this moment in time. That's in part, too, why our school committee policy recommendation is just to modify that one sentence. It could be as early as the end of February that we know what those additional areas determined by the board could look like, and that might actually cause us to pivot a little bit in what our thinking is at the moment. What we do know is, we have had statewide curriculum frameworks in place for decades. We know what ninth and 10th grade math looks like. We know what ninth and 10th grade ELA looks like. We know what our biology courses look like at the high school and what the standards are for those courses. They're well-aligned to our Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. So, we feel confident, I think internally, between Dr. Donovan and myself, that we're well in alignment with what those state requirements are. And we're just, we're going to move forward with the information that we have and make sure that we're not leaving any kids behind that would qualify at this moment in time. But I do agree with you. It is, it feels loose. I'm hoping after the month of February that it's better, that that's what we've been told, based on what the board is discussing during their February meetings. So, as soon as we have more clarity, we'll share it with you.
Yeah, no, I just didn't know. I mean, it just feels like some of these gray area students like you were talking about, if your competency determination committee said, okay, this is great based on our, based on this, and then.
Well, I'll share with you this, and it was the first after the ballot initiative.
Feels unfair to you guys, actually. That's sort of my lens I'm looking for.
I will say, the, Dr. Burrows brought this up earlier today. Our class that graduated last year, class of 2024, many of the, because of COVID, they couldn't take the MCAS in ninth and 10th grade. So, very recently, we had to go through a similar process to determine the competency determination for students based on coursework. We expect that that is likely what DESI will try to roll out, is more of that language that they used during COVID to help districts kind of norm how they make their decisions.
That actually makes me feel better.
So, we expect that there's a framework that could come out, but it is, there is not much guidance other than the language that was there for most of the last couple of months.
I don't, it is in our favor to continue to align ourselves with the state requirements, or at least what the state is proposing and planning to do. So, I'm less concerned with, we're going to be a loose cannon, or we're going to, we're having students that may transfer to another district before they graduate who weren't prepared to meet that district's requirement. So, I don't have a lot of unease about that. Dr. Burrows, at the beginning of the, at the introduction, you said there were a few asks of the committee. I heard one ask in the presentation this evening, which was an update to the policy. So, my question to the policy subcommittee is, is that on your agenda? And if so, when do you think you might have that policy revision that we'll present to the school committee? And then, my question to you, Dr. Burrows, are there other asks this evening, or is this the only one for this evening?
I just ask for your patience. As we have more information, if anything changes, if our timeline changes, we will of course inform the committee. It's our duty, and the Department of Education is recommending that school districts work closely with their school committees on this to make sure that the public is aware of what's going on. So, just asking for your patience. There will be opportunities, and we'll update you when those arise. There will be regional meetings for that Governor's Graduation Council for local communities to have input in what that could look like, and we'll share those opportunities with the school committee as well. But really, right now, it's the school committee policy that we need amended. A little bit of patience, and we'll come back as soon as we know more.
Thank you. And so, then I will put my first question to the policy subcommittee.
Do you want?
Yeah, go for it. We have a meeting next week, and we'll put this at the top of the agenda, along with a few other policies that we want to revamp as soon as possible. So, theoretically, before next school committee meeting, we'll have it done, so we'll have our first reading.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I think that's very comfortable.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, a couple of questions. Had, and I, apologies if I missed it. For the Pathway Three and Pathway Four, students who've already graduated, so this is the group 2003 through 2024, has anybody anywhere indicated a timeline wherein we need to get those ducks in a row and have audits completed and all that stuff? Has that been in guidance or mandate in any form yet that we're aware of?
I have no communication about a specific timeline.
That's more, that's more comfortable than tomorrow.
Sure, sure. Sure, I have no communication from the state about a specific timeline for those kids. I would say that right now, the class of 2025 is our top priority, and we're going to be focusing on those students first, and then addressing that piece once we have those students figured out.
Followed by 2026? And on down the line? That makes sense. Related to that, and forgive me if I'm messing up the dates, if you have a current sophomore who took the science test last year, biology, right, and they passed, does that still count? Or is that null and void? Or do we?
Yeah, so any, it's a great question. So, any MCAS that were taken or administered before, I believe, December 5th.
Before the, okay.
Though, any of those scores, if the student passed, can be used for a competency determination.
Okay.
Any MCAS, starting really next week, we start the bio retest. So, our students who are taking the bio retest are students who were not here in ninth grade or didn't take it in 10th grade, for whatever reason, and are looking to take, take the test so they can qualify for the Koplik Scholarship.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's helpful. And yeah, actually, you answered the question on the priorities, the 2025. And if, and I, this is, does anybody have any ballpark number of kids that, for whatever reason, transfers or whatever, that we have to figure out the path forward for our 2025 kids?
Yes, we have a very, we have very few, and I would say five or less students for whom we have to go back and now assess like their ninth grade science class.
Great.
So, that, that group is very small. When we get to sophomore, or our current juniors, that number gets a little bit bigger.
Sure.
And it will depend a little bit on what, how they did on their retest in November.
Right.
Because they'll have a mismatch of the two.
Okay. And one of those results typically out?
Those are out at this point, I believe.
Okay.
So, the science retest will start next week, and we'll get those in late March.
Thank you for the detail. I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
That's all I have, I'm sure.
Thank you. All right, anything else on this?
No.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Godspeed.
Seriously, Godspeed.
Yeah. Okay, we're going to go right on, stay right there.
Right here.
We're going to move right on to the proposed Foxborough High School Program of Studies. We're going to welcome Dr. Macharnik.
Sarah, just a quick question. The language in the packet says recommend for approval. The agenda item says information only. Are we, are you, is there a request for approval this evening, or is it simply information only?
It is, yes. You have to, it is a request for approval because the school committee approves changes to the high school.
Which is what I recall, but I wasn't sure, I don't recall whether they did it in two presentations or one, so.
Yes. So, good evening again. I'm happy to be joined by Dr. Macharnik. We're here with our changes for the, proposed for the 25-26 school year at the high school in our program of studies. The changes that you have before you are almost entirely in the Science Department. And Dr. Macharnik, here tonight to answer any specific questions you may have about the courses. But all the changes come out of the Science Curriculum Review three years ago, and these courses are being added to our program of studies in line with that curriculum review.
That's great.
Happy to entertain any specific questions you have about the courses.
I love seeing your plan move forward. That's, I don't have any questions. This was all anticipated.
So, motion to approve the changes to the Foxborough High School English and Science Department Program of Studies for the 2025-2026 school year.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor? Great, that's 5-0-0. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
She had to work on this. Thank you. Think you're excused, thank you.
I appreciate it. Enjoyed my time here.
Yes, we have to. All right, we have a superintendent update, but Dr. Berdows is unfortunately ill tonight. So, Dr. Burrows is going to step up and give us that update. Thank you.
Sure. So, a couple of updates for you all. Kindergarten registration is open, as a reminder to families. If your child is turning five on or before August 31st, we encourage you to register your child as soon as possible. It is helpful to support our elementary schools in planning to welcome all eligible students. It's helpful for us to know as early as possible. There is a orientation for kindergarten families, tentatively scheduled for the middle of March. That's pretty consistent with what we've done in the past. And families, once they register, will begin to receive that information. Report cards for our kindergartners are also coming out on Friday. Congratulations to Alicia Beggs, a math and science teacher at the Ahern Middle School, has been named a 2022 recipient for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. They were a little bit backlogged at the national level, but we've just received word. The Presidential Award is the highest recognition that any K-12 science, technology, engineering, or mathematics teacher can receive for outstanding teaching in the United States. Awardees receive a certificate signed by the President, a trip to Washington DC to attend a series of recognition events, and professional development opportunities, and a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation. We are so proud of Mrs. Beggs, and we are grateful to have her as a member of our faculty at the Ahern Middle School. Our students are lucky to have her, and this is just such a big honor, just fantastic news. This week, our select group of middle and high school students are completing peer mediation training. This training is three full days in full. We've had about 35 students trained over the course of the past few weeks. We've also identified two staff, staff member at the middle school and at the high school to be trained as well to support this program moving forward. As early as the end of next week, we'll be ready to launch a peer mediation program at the middle and high school level. This program is thanks to our district receiving a Rethinking Discipline Grant for the 24-25 school year. That allowed us to have a trainer come in and support our kids in this important program. Congratulations to our nine Foxborough High School students, music students that have qualified for the 2025 All-State Ensembles. Those students will practice, they will rehearse at the DCU Center in Worcester, and they will perform at Boston Symphony Hall in March. So, congratulations to those kids. Last week, we had a very successful Screenagers event. We had a great turnout. There were about 100 folks in attendance. Many students sat and viewed the film with us, and we had a very engaging Q&amp;A session after the film with families and members of the district. A thank you to Janice Watt in Food Service for her support in providing that dinner to families. Patrick Murphy and others from the YMCA who provided childcare, National Honor Society students who also provided childcare, thank you to them. We are very grateful for the sponsorship from our PTOs and our PACs. We had special guests on that evening. They included Dr. Larry Epstein, who has supported the district for a number of years, nurse practitioner and Foxborough parent pediatric specialist Jess Zoff, who was very helpful in answering questions with families. Thank you to Mr. Noon at Ahern Middle School, who came and represented our wellness staff, and also members of our wellness committee, including our nurse leader, Jen Rosenberg, and Amy Muldowney, our community wellness coordinator. Also in attendance were many of our building principals and our director of Student Services and myself. It was really a great event, and I think parents really appreciated the opportunity to engage in that Q&amp;A. And one last announcement, Dr. Berdows has previously shared with the committee and sent communication out to the community. We are beginning our strategic planning process and seeking community input. On February 6th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Foxborough High School Media Center, we will be having a community member focus group as part of that process to kick off our next strategic plan. We hope that you can attend. And that's all.
Thank you. A lot of wonderful things embedded in that update. Thank you. Very happy, happy update. Any questions for Dr. Burrows? Comments?
No.
All right. We're going to move right along to the student representative update. We have Stevie and Yasmin.
So, we are officially into term three, over halfway done with the year. At the high school, thanks to the MSA, which is the Muslim Student Association, and Dr. Waz, who was here earlier, there's now a room where Muslim students can pray during the school day. Previously, they would just use areas in the office, but now there's a dedicated room that they can go to, so they're not. that they can go to, so they're not kicking someone else out of their area. So that was just great.
I'm excited to announce that Multicultural Appreciation MCA will be hosting this year's World Culture Night. This event will be taken, will be taking place on April 14th in the Foxborough High School Cafeteria and Media Center. It will be from 6:00 to 8:00, and soon there will be posters around the schools and in the newsletters with QR codes and links to the forums if you would like to host tables for the event or do a performance. Also, there will be more information to come later on. Thank you. Oh, there are also a cookie dough fundraiser for the Class of 2026 Prom. What was that? There's a link on the Instagram. It's Class 2026.
All right, so get some cookie dough and support 2026. That's you guys, right? That's awesome. Thank you for the update. That's great. Any questions or comments from anyone? No?
Thank you.
All right. Gonna move right along to the FY26 Budget Hearing and Vote of Recommendation. So we have this.
So a little bit about the FY26 budget. So FY26 budget was built with lots of analysis, collaboration, and strategy to come up with a level service budget that meets the high level of educational services and aligns with the district's strategic goals and plans for success. We listened to the town's recommendation at the financial summit to build a level service budget, which differs from a level funding budget. In previous school committee meetings, we discussed the definition of a level service budget. The level service budget has the same level of teaching and learning for students. It absorbs fixed cost increases, including inflation. It allows for financial budget increases from previous years to maintain all programs, and increases in transportation and special education added district tuition are part of this level service. We initially found a level service budget would be an increase of 5.67%. So we quickly met with the town manager and the finance director to collaboratively come up with a strategy to meet the needs of a level service budget for our district and for our students, but to keep in mind that the budget would need to be sustainable in the budget for the town for future years. With this in mind, we determined the best approach would have a general fund budget of 3.5% increase and set up a special education stabilization fund for the overage and the increase in our special education added district tuitions. That would, and that could not, that could not sustain the 3.5% increase. During the process, we reviewed our use of outside resources, the grants and the revolving funds. We discussed the major budget drivers for FY26, which included transportation increases, special education added district tuition increases, contractual obligations, and a very small amount, 1.08% for the increases for everything else, utility increases, inflation, steps, lanes for staff, et cetera. We discussed the budget challenge, which we had, which was 3.99% increase to the budget was just full level service staffing without a COLA for unsettled contracts, and the fact that we have five unions in negotiations. We discussed that payroll is 83.15% of this budget. We reviewed comparable statistical data to measure relative spending across school districts, and reviewed the history of town appropriated budget increases, as well as Foxborough Public Schools student enrollment data and student profiles. We also had budget workshops. We discussed various areas of school finance. All of this great discussion and collaboration led us to the FY26 Superintendent Recommended Budget that we bring forward tonight. The FY26 Superintendent Recommended Budget is 3.5% increase of $43,565,988, and that's for the town appropriated general fund, and $950,000 for our special education stabilization fund to be set up. There would be two articles that will be needed at town meeting for the stabilization fund. The first one would be the warrant article to set up the stabilization fund, and the second one would be the warrant article to transfer funds from the free cash in the amount of $950,000 for the initial one-time setup for this reserve fund. We also discussed how that stabilization fund would work in the future. So with all of this in mind, we would need the following votes. The first vote would be to approve the FY26 budget in the amount of the $43,565,988. The second one would be a vote to support an article at town meeting to accept GLC 40S 13E for the purpose of creating a special education stabilization fund for unanticipated and unbudgeted costs for special education. And then we would also need a vote to support an article at town meeting to transfer the funds from the free cash in the amount of the $950,000, as indicated for that initial one-time startup for the special education stabilization fund. So with that, if anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer them. Sorry? And then capital, I thought we were doing capital after the budget.
It's a different line, agenda item.
Yeah.
Budget for us, right?
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Oh, roll call vote. Okay.
Karen, was there any feedback from the meeting with the Advisory Committee?
We haven't been able to meet with them yet. We have it set for, I think it's February 10th because of what the superintendent out.
Right.
We did have, we have that tentatively set. I spoke to them, the Advisory Committee, today.
And one other question. Refresh my memory, please. We are proposing a single dollar amount. The plan that we have in front of us is simply a plan. If there are requirements to move money around to support different requirements or needs, whether they be compensation or something else, we have the ability to do that after we approve this dollar amount.
Yes.
Right? Thank you.
That's correct.
Yes.
Thank you. I appreciate the question, Rob. That was mine.
Thank you. So, any other questions? Sorry. So, motion to approve the fiscal year 26, 2026 budget in the amount of $43,565,988.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? Comments? All right, none? All in favor?
Oh, we gotta do roll call?
No, it isn't. It was confirmed. We do not need a roll call.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it.
We can do it if you want to, bud.
No, that's okay.
All in favor?
Thanks, Madam Chair.
All right. That's an approval, 5-0-0. Thank you. Now we are, there's no other discussion, we're gonna move on to the capital improvement.
No, we have two other items.
Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry.
So the second.
Thank you. It's good.
Sorry. Thank you.
Motion to support an article at town meeting to create a special education stabilization fund in accordance with statute, GLC 40, Section 13E, for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education.
Correct. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0 as well. Thank you. Third motion.
Motion to support an article at town meeting to transfer funds from free cash in the amount of $950,000 for the initial one-time startup costs for the special education stabilization fund.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? And that would be 5-0-0 as well. Thank you very much. Okay. Any further questions or discussion?
Thank you for the detail.
All right. So now we are moving on to the discussion and approval of the 26 Capital Improvement Plan.
Yeah, right. Much like the FY26 school budget, we also had collaboration and discussion with developing the five-year capital plan. Tonight, we asked the school committee to vote to approve the FY26 capital plan, which totals $1,774,000. The details are transportation in the amount of $272,000, our copy machines in the amount of $40,000, system-wide technology in the amount of $350,000. Other equipment, which much was the principal's request, is $52,000, which would include the Ahern library and the music lab refresh. Major repairs, again, one of the principal's requests, is $60,000 at the Ahern for carpeting. And finally, the building renovation, which is $1 million for the Taylor School, for the full renovation. So the reason that that is in FY26 is because although it has not been approved yet, if it is approved, the need for that funding could be as early as May of 2025. So the estimate of the $1 million should be on the capital plan at this point. So that brings the total capital budget to $1,774. And just to give you an idea, for FY25, last year, so without that Taylor School renovation, it was 772. So it's pretty close to level service on that capital plan as well.
Sure.
So the vote would need to approve FY26 School Capital Improvement Plan in the amount of $1,774.
All right. Any questions or discussion?
No.
Okay.
Motion to approve the fiscal year 26 Capital Improvement Plan in the amount of $1,774,000.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. That passes 5-0-0 as well. Thank you. Any further questions? Comments? No? Okay. So we are gonna move on to the approval of the 25, 26 school calendar.
Okay, so we have made just a few changes to the calendar since we last presented it to school committee. One of those changes is the last day of school was adjusted from the 17th to the 16th due to an error just in counting months, counting days in the month of April. We did determine that the last day for seniors would be May 29th. As a reminder, the last day for seniors, including exams, cannot be more than 12 school days from the regularly scheduled last day of school. So starting at that 16th and counting back 12 school days brings us to May 29th. We did also make an adjustment to the length of trimesters for our elementary schools to account for the overlap between the trimester one report cards and parent-teacher conferences as well. But outside of those changes, everything else is as it was the last time that you saw it.
Great. Thank you very much for that explanation. Any questions or comments on this?
Dr. Burrows, I'm assuming this meets with admin and faculty approval, and everyone's looked at it?
Absolutely. We've also met with our union leadership and reviewed the calendar and made adjustments as well, based on their input.
Thank you. No other questions, Madam Chair?
Awesome.
Motion to approve the 2025, 2026 school calendar as presented this evening.
Second.
Any further discussion? Questions? Comments? All in favor of approving the calendar? And that would be 5-0-0 as well. Thank you very much. Now we're gonna go over to our policy subcommittee. You guys can talk to us about all your wonderful work.
So there were five policies that Mr. Irman and myself had reviewed, following recommendations from Ms. Sheridan in the Finance Budget Office. Specifically, the theme was trying to make the policies a better reflection of how we actually do things, so therefore the policy document kind of matched our reality in the district. And then there was also a couple that just needed updated legal statute references. And so that's the product of the five that we did our first reading for last meeting. And the way the policy procedure works is if it's brought forward and the budget, Policy Subcommittee looks at it, and once it's ready and been checked out with various stakeholders, then we can bring it forward to the full committee for first reading, which we do, and has to be read into the record. And then tonight is the opportunity for a second reading, and after a second reading, the committee can make changes, table it, or vote it. And so that's where we are now.
Motion to waive the second reading of FileDBG, the Budget Adoption Procedures.
Second. All in favor? All right, that'd be unanimous.
Motion to accept the revisions to policy, or excuse me, to FileDBG, Budget Adoption Procedures.
Second. Any further discussion on this? All right, all in favor? Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. I make a motion to waive the second reading of Policy DBG, DBJ, excuse me.
Budget Transfer Authority. Second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
I make a motion to adopt Policy DBJ, Budget Transfer Authority, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Pass. Thank you.
Motion to waive the second reading of FileDH, Bonded Employees and Officers.
A second.
All in favor?
Motion to adopt the revised FileDH, Bonded Employees and Officers.
A second.
All in favor?
I motion to waive the reading of Policy DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting.
Second.
All in favor? All right.
I make a motion to adopt Policy DI, Fiscal Accounting and Reporting, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. I make a motion to waive the reading of Policy DJ, Purchasing.
Second.
All in favor?
I make a motion to adopt Policy DJ, Purchasing, as presented.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for that work. Sounds like, excuse me, it sounds like you guys are not finished, the work that you're doing, and I just want to acknowledge how much time and effort that this has taken. We just made quick work of this by waiving the readings, but it's not lost on me, myself, and everybody else in this committee, how much work it actually took to review all of that. So thank you both very much. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you for encouraging us to bring them forward. Get it moving.
I'm a doer, and so are you, so thank you. All right, so is there any further discussion on, for Budget Policy Subcommittee here, before we move on? We're good? All right, we're gonna move on to the acceptance of donations.
I'm going to be doing that. So this is one that's a little bit different. It's the Ahern Middle School has participated in the School Pulse Panel Survey, in which they received a debit card in the amount of $200. There is no restrictions on the use of this funds. However, I have been informed that they intend to use the funds for the Unified Sports Program. So it's $200. It's a debit card.
That's awesome. Can you just repeat? What did they do to get these?
To participate in the January 2025 School Pulse Panel Survey.
Cool. That's awesome.
Motion to accept the donation in the amount of $200, I think, and gratitude to, was it Karen that actually completed the survey, or is it someone else?
I think Karen was the one who did it.
With gratitude to Karen Frazier for completing the survey that earned that $200 donation.
Nice.
Great.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? All right, great, 5-0-0. Thank you very much, and thank you, Ms. Frazier, for that. That's awesome. All right. Community updates. Why don't we start down there? Yasmin and Stevie, anything else? No? All right. Karen? Don't have anything. Dr. Burrows? Brent?
Nothing.
Michelle? Nothing. Rob?
Yeah, just with all of the changes that are coming down from the federal level, I know that MASC, as well as some other organizations at the state level, are providing a number of workshops to public officials. I'm attending the one on Friday at 10:00 a.m., I believe, but you should be receiving emails at least from MASC about any of those workshops. And all the ones I've attended up to now have been content-rich. So, if you are available to attend them, I would highly recommend them.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you. Good reminder. Thank you for bringing that up. Along the lines of webinars, we still have a little bit to go on the MIIA.
I've got two.
We have a couple more opportunities, and I believe a few more webinars to get us to our goal for that and max it out. So, if anyone has any opportunities to do that, please, and thank you. Okay. I think we're at the end. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Thank you. Good night.